All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lightco Township Board to order. Start out from the moment of silence. Light slow, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call call, please.
Howard. Mr. Darnold.
Here.
Mr. St. Haskins.
Yeah.
Mr. Carter Jenkins.
President.
Mr. Phil Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Carter, maybe you're here. Mr. Loretta.
Yeah.
Mr. Lord.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Here.
Thank you. Reading a statement out of notes, please.
There is a business meeting considered to open public meetings after it's been given its proper posting. Those things school board members want to solve. Apologizing in the Wellington Town Times and Imperial Post in January 30. Sending notice in the Wellington Town Times and Imperial Post to the first person. How written is it?
Thank you. I need a motion in a second for the approval of the amendments of August 12, 2020, regular executive session meeting and August 19, 2020, special meeting, this is the debate. In a motion, in a second, please.
Go make the motion.
A second.
Second. Questions or comments?
Um, here is Darnold has a comment. Since what I said last time, the meetings are not extensive enough. As an example, when the minutes from the last meeting, it said Mr. Darnold commented that math curriculum should have been used home to here. That was not the thrust of the meetings because these minutes are very helpful, thankfully, here coming to be really good. So I would.
Okay, that's your comment. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That view?
Darnold.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I've done the reports of the Secretary and Treasurer for July 2020. I make a motion. I need a second on that, please. A second. More questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Darnold.
Motion carries. Thank you. Liaison reports. Rose, do you have any other side ideas for us?
Um, yes. You have those in the front panel.
I think this was the student.
The studio.
Student.
But I can put it now.
Oh, I'll look them up.
Okay.
While I go PTO, Mr. Mercy, do some for us.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. We have Mrs. Wendy Langen, who sent an email prior to the meeting, saying that they're going to be having a PTO meeting virtually on Tuesday, September 22, which we've been sent out. And there also have been mostly virtual Spalastic Fair on September 28 throughout September 9. And more info will come over the next couple of weeks. So that's the announcements from PTO.
All right, thank you. Do we have any announcements from Township Committee? From Township Committee? Thank you. All right, welcome, everybody. Glad to see you all. Make good night. A couple of questions that people were questioning us, why didn't we decide to do a PTO meeting instead of a virtual meeting? So we're authorities who had a couple of meetings two months in a row. They've been real meetings. We have things that have to be discussed in executive session. We have the superintendent's report to do tonight. And this wasn't something that was discussed or decided by one person. This was something that was decided by multiple people. Myself, you know, as a president, Mrs. Karen Newton, as vice president, with the superintendent, and also our school business administrator. Why? Because some of the things we have to discuss need to be kept confidential. And in Zoom meetings, very difficult to do that sometimes. So that is the reason why we are having the meeting. Hopefully, it'll work out this way and we can continue this way. We shall see. Moving on. Student recognition. We don't have anything. I'm going to open this to public comment on agenda meetings. Need your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Stephen McLaughlin, 740 Randcocos Avenue, here in Delaco. I just want to tag on to that. This is not directly on the agenda, but I really have a concern with the fact that this meeting was planned in person without any way for the public to comment virtually. We've been allowing virtual public comments since the beginning of the pandemic. And I really just have to say you didn't handle this as well as you could have. There wasn't a public link to the YouTube stream until about 5:00 p.m. today. And there wasn't a public announcement that there would even be a virtual component until today. So I'm wondering, why was that not a higher priority for you, members of this board, to allow comment remotely, especially from members of the community who have health concerns?
I mean, this is public comment.
Yeah.
So we received his comments and questions. Share whatever we see fit. Although, here's what I'll say for members of public, for those who are viewing. There was a message sent to the community on the first day of school, which was just yesterday, stating a couple of different facts, including board meeting, which I gave like a little teaser of. We're exploring a live stream. So I think that's part of the challenge with communicating is you have to have everything ready. So just so that the board is aware, so the public is aware, our live stream literally became ready today. So there was no way to inform anyone at any point that my live stream. So I think that what we've done here, as I've said with others who have asked, this is a new possibility for our board and for our district, right? I am always open to exploring new possibilities and even embracing them. This is something we've never done before. This is the most difficult challenge we've ever faced when it comes to COVID-19. So when it comes to the issue of a public board view, the decision was, well, we want to do it in person. But we also want to allow people to view proceedings of the meeting. Because if you look historically at boards that have proceedings being viewed by others having covered, that's not a two-way communication. That's, okay, visit us at this website, look at this TV channel, et cetera. So I mean, there were a lot of considerations that went into this, just so for the benefit of everyone's here, who's here and everyone who's watching, that we discussed this with our solicitor. We discussed this amongst ourselves here as the president, vice president, board secretary, superintendent. So those decisions like this are just made quickly. They are not made easily. And in fact, I mean, it was a process of deliberating over it for a pretty significant amount of time. So I just want everyone to be aware that even though the communication happened today, that doesn't mean that that's when the decision happened. That's not when we planned on sharing any of that. I would have loved to share it, but you know, so just for the benefit of the public, we do the best we can with what we have under the current service. So I don't know if the president or vice president wants to.
No, I agree with what Mr. Mercy says and what Phil had mentioned during his president's message. We took a lot of time to go over all pros and cons of this situation. And due to some situations that we kind of looked at to board members, being able to connect, being able to interact as best as possible, this gave us the opportunity to make it happen for the majority. And we do have the ability to have a confidential executive session. And all parties will be there for that executive session. So they're making the they're making the steps possible to get into that position so that we can have a great conversation in a confidential manner. Because there was some concern, and that is part of our function as well, is to have confidential discussions. And one of which then would be the superintendent's evaluations. And we had to be sure that this was going to be done in the best and safe way to ensure confidentiality. And this really is the best way for us to ensure that. And while it's not ideal for everyone, we did want to offer the transparency of our meeting, and that's how we're live streaming. And while it's not ideal, because there's no two-way communication, we do offer the ability, you know, for people to come here and to ask questions. And, you know, and we're doing the best that we can in offering the social distancing, you know, we're wearing masks. We're doing the best we can to provide a normal state that, you know, we can hopefully handle.
I would like to make a comment to come about. Am I allowed to make a comment?
May I make a comment?
We expect, we always say we need high expectations of our children. I think we need the same high expectations of our board. That means this kind of meeting could have been put together very quickly. You could have taken questions from the public. And you guys decided, and all the board members, the four people mentioned, in a manner, they decided not to adopt stewardship. That doesn't happen in every town. This town didn't make the decision to do that. As a board, we need to do better, just like we expect our children to do that. That's my comment.
Mrs. Darnold, I appreciate your comments, but you have to understand some of the things that were going on, some of the things that are happening in the school district. Financially, we're in a very interesting situation, which we haven't been in in a long time. I wish we had the money. One of them, we've got Albert, who can take care of our, you know, do some of our electronic stuff, which is great. We do not have the ability to do some of the things a larger school district can do.
Last.
We do, we do as best as we have with what we have.
Last meeting, he had a bad function. People were making comments during the committee. Why didn't we?
Yeah, why not accept questions by email?
Well, Mrs. Darnold, and for the benefit of the public, so that I don't want to just say, well, we can't debate this, but this was discussed thoroughly with our board's listener, who we take the legal and practical advice of our board's listener. So it's not as though I was in my office by myself and, you know, came upon this idea when the light went off. It was, let's talk with our solicitor about the best possible option for our district. So when you say we should expect better and have high expectations, we certainly do. And so that's my responsibility.
You think that's not to get public comment?
No, because we have an in-person meeting that allows for public.
In-person meeting during an epidemic is not.
Just because it's legal and the lawyer says, okay, we should be working to get the public involved.
Well, I don't disagree that at all. In fact, I believe the public should be involved.
I agree. I agree. I believe 95% of the public picked it up after student of the month every meeting. I kind of wish there was more public involvement even pre-COVID. Because in five years, I sat at this meeting and watched 95% of our public leave after student of the month. No questions asked, only when there was something going on. So I agree that we definitely need to have public involvement. We need more questions and more people involved. Just say this, if people had questions about what was on the agenda tonight, could they have emailed them to the administration?
Certainly. And they could certainly ask me questions at any point.
I just, the people at home can't hear you. We're getting text messages that they don't hear you.
Can they hear me? That's what I'm asking.
And that's the other thing.
Sure, they're saying they can't hear. I'm just, that's what I'm just.
So what, thank you, Mrs. Darnold. What you're exposing is the challenges of handling these technologies that we haven't really worked with before. But I kind of wish they could hear. I, you know, Mr. Lord, your point is well taken with that. And also, if anyone ever wants to come to me, I've had people come to me directly with questions. When they do, I will assist them. I am very, very available when it comes to these types of things. So if someone were to say, well, I must come to a public board meeting in order to ask Joe Mercy a question, that is not accurate. And so that, to me, there are certain.
The conception that we have to have, the evaluation, and it walks.
Yes.
It, you know, the majority of the members were going to be, it didn't make sense to have an in-person meeting. I will say that in future, if this pandemic persists and we are, you know, more and more people, you know, I do have founding members that have compromised the meeting systems, going to expose themselves behind this situation. I do think that we should, you know, work to make sure there's more two-way communication. But I just hope that no one is implying that we were trying to be sneaky with something on the agenda because we didn't have. You know, we've been planning for years to get our servers up. You know, constantly working within our budget. So I'm just saying that, I get it. We should apply standards for our school district. And I will say from a perspective of this is COVID and everything has changed, we're doing the best we can with the resources that a small district has. And I will say this, I think that for anybody who is a new board member, I honestly think their first round program on budget finding is, is they would get a very, they would get a real quick, it's patient, of limitations of a small district and a small budget. And the reason I have my mask on is people didn't hear me when I had my mask on. I got a presentation, you were talking, I had a very hard time understanding. I gotta be quite true. Do you have any other questions, Tom?
Sure, I have another question on, this is skipping ahead of the agenda, but first of all, I really have to commend the board for remaining virtual only for the first marketing period. I think that was the right decision. If you have some kind of high-level concerns about the reopening plan, just, I just want to throw this out there real quick and just take this into consideration. Doesn't seem to me that the reopening plan addresses airborne COVID transmission. So there's a lot of detail on cleaning the surfaces, cleaning bathrooms, cleaning the outdoor playground facilities. Not a lot of detail on things like ventilation. And to me, to my mind, you know, as someone, I'm not an epidemiologist. I just read a lot of news. It seems like airflow is highly important, things like exhaust fans. So A, ventilation, B, possibly air filtration in classrooms. And then C, the possibility of using UV light to disinfect spaces. I'm wondering if those things have come into the conversation.
Okay. ventilation filtration. Mr. Hallidew is here and I'm going to talk about our walkover tonight and explain to some of the things that we discussed, some of the things that we're doing here, public ventilation, the type of filters.
Okay. Please look forward to that.
I'm sorry, Harry. Say again, please. That way people can hear me, Harry. Sorry, I didn't understand you, Harry.
He said the audio was out of phase.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, okay?
I can hear, but I can't. It's like I'm being given a phone call.
I don't know why, Harry. I'm sorry, I can't help you on that. You heard me better that time?
So, Mr. Jenkins, aside from Mr. Loretta's obstacle, I mean, the issue might give us a, I don't know. I tend to talk to the public and report about the plan. I don't want to say it's a work in progress because it has been completed twice, actually, it's been finalized twice. But the Department of Education, Department of Health, and other state level authorities, we've already identified with them and with our reopening, a handful of different topics that I'm focused on, revised plan. So the plan has third information at some point over the next month to address HVAC more thoroughly, to address a number of different things that we, as a district, even with that, said, well, we have some deficiencies here and we want to make sure we get that. I just, I do want every member of the public to understand, like, we are not presenting the plan today, like the one that's on there for approval. That's still not the final plan. That's only the plan, it's like an intermediary plan before we get to the next plan. It's been a very challenging process to have the state provide guidance in the way that they've done. It's untimely. Many times, it's untimely. It is inconsistent. It is shifting every other day sometimes. And sometimes it's non-existent. So it happened in a challenging process, but the point is that we do have a very clear direction now when it comes to addressing those issues that were identified.
Thank you. Steve, you have any other questions, sir?
That'll do for now.
Okay. All right. Go for it.
Just, someone brought it to my attention that in the agenda, there is no email address as a point of contact. So maybe just moving forward, if the questions aren't able to be emailed beforehand, just seems like if there could be a point of contact, so they know where to send the questions.
That's a very good idea. It's very good to do that for our next.
In what we, in my Blackpool message, I typically, I would say 99% of the time, say, please reach out to me if a person writes a line about myself.
Like if they don't have kids in the school, like for people who don't have kids in the school.
Have pipes.
On the website, under the board members, everyone who are emailing addresses are home there. So absolutely, that's a great resource for them to look at, to reach out to, and people can have the information to Mr. Mercy Morgan, that's his.
Well, what I would like to do, and I really appreciate his comment, is I would likely put my email address on the agenda every month. If it meant that people would reach out to me with their questions, because I would prefer that over suddenly having questions that have, you know what I'm saying? I think that's a better process.
I think with all due respect, I think that members of the public may want to write to the entire board, not just to the superintendent.
Well, we typically, the hierarchy is, you know, we do not, you email us, we do not answer.
But you are elected officials, right? And you are elected by the people who live in this town. Why can't the public write emails to you?
Because it's not our job to answer questions to the public. That's the superintendent's job.
So they can. So if you write to Phil that much, Phil typically reroute to me and say, Joe, could you address this? Because the board, just for everyone's education, the board is not approved by the administrators. They're a governing body. So they do not administer the district. They are not the day-to-day problem solvers. They are not the decision maker who's on, you know, what should Mr. Conti's schedule look like for, you know, second grade? You know, the board is not new. The board is the governing body. So if you reach out to a board member, please expect to hear from me, most likely, with some kind of response, because board members, although they can receive information, they're not necessarily, they can't answer questions. They're not necessarily the wife and manager.
I want to be 100% clear. You, with all due respect, I'm worrying about this board and this body. You, Mr. Mercy, are not on the board. Is that correct? You are on the board?
This, this and those out on line are appointed members of the Board of Education.
I see.
We are not elected.
Appointed member.
The elected members serve a different function than the appointed members.
Right. Okay, that helps clarify. Thank you.
Yes.
So that's what I mean. I think it's an education process for everyone to understand how boards of education work, how administrators work, the different roles and responsibilities. And also say a lot of matters that we deal with involve students, parents, staff. And we have to be, trust me, you will learn very quickly about New Jersey school and ethnic laws. And you have to be extremely careful what you say. The slightest thing, if you think it's just a general remark, it could be a violation of the ethics also. That's why I think most board members are something very cautious with how we answer the public. Because we do get direct questions, because most of the matters involve students, staff, and, you know, confidential matters that are mandated confidential. Like we say, oh, this is confidential, the state mandated confidential.
There's a lot of things that are mandated by the state that we have no control over. And, you know, even though we might not be in favor of what the state is saying or what is being happening, we have no choice in it. We have to. And special education is one of our largest costs. And if a child has to be going out of district, places out of the district, we don't have a choice. If their ID is spelling out, they have to go to a certain school. They're going to that school and we're paying for it. And, you know, those are a lot of things that you'll see in some of our finance reports also. Your honor.
And just to also educate members of the public and those who are here, when the agenda is created, those are all recommendations. That's me, that's Vicki recommending certain items. What was that? All right. So that's Vicki and me, we're recommending certain items. The board decides whether they approve those items, right? So if I put an item on there and the board members vote five to four against, then that doesn't get passed. And we now need to go in a different direction. So as superintendent, I serve at their will. So if the majority of the voting board says, Joe, we are approving your recommendation, that's the process. But there have been cases where I want to put something on the agenda. I talk about it with committees and the committee says, we're not ready to move in that direction. We're not ready for that step, you know, that type of thing. So it is a process of superintendent and VA, business administrator, recommending items for the board to approve. And there, as we've witnessed tonight, board members are free to vote no on any item with the understanding that if they vote no and the item doesn't pass, we need to go in a different direction. Possibly it could be, you know, something that's required by the state that we need to do. How do we address that? So it's, it is, it's a process. So it's just for the sake of the public and the beauty of the public. We certainly follow a process that grew me as the, like, the chief, my official title is Chief School Minister. Me making the recommendations to the board and the board saying, okay, Joe, we can support you if you're not. And that's, you know, that's out for the board. But there are many things that happen at the board level that are decided that are not part of the decision, that board members decide to manage on their own. So for example, let's say there's a board member that is doing something that the president needs to address. That's the president's responsibility because the board is not supervised by him and the board is not managed by him. So it's definitely an interesting, intricate relationship. But I hope over time, Mr. McLaughlin and anyone else who has questions, we are always open to discuss topics. As long as they're not confidential, we are open.
Yes? Do you hear me?
This is just an idea, perhaps for the next time that we have to do this live stream. I don't even know if it's possible. Albert would know. Is it possible to get like a speaker, like a microphone, I mean, in between, like maybe in the gym, so there's more room, like there's a sound system?
We consider that and we also consider passing a microphone around to possibly be non-hygienic. So.
Well, that would be, yeah.
We also have a microphone system that's probably about 20 years old, and we didn't want to use and have incredible amount of static and feedback. So I want everyone to be reminded, this is our first time doing that.
No, no.
This is, I mean, it's a real board meeting, but we've never done this before. So yes, I mean, if you, if we expect perfection from the first time we've ever done something, I think, yeah.
No, fly that.
No, I'm, I tried to, no.
I talked through the message very differently.
Oh, I tried to things like that.
I am real.
Sorry.
Okay, moving on. Any other comments to the public? Okay, I propose this to the public comment agenda. Superintendent's report. Mr. Mercer.
All right. Thank you, Jenkins. Motion is requested to approve the following. Items A through I on superintendent's report. And once we go through the motioning process, I'll provide some comments.
Happy. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
So just a comment to the board and the public, but that was actually already on the agenda once. Lindsay Courtney and Melissa Eckhart were reversed on accident. Also have the development plan as an annual requirement, the inventory plan as an annual requirement. And then we also have the reopening plan, which, as I explained earlier, this is the revision that was shared on August 24. I'm anticipating sharing of other revisions after we go through a handful of different steps at the end of this month or early October. I, it's my hope that that's our final revision and that we're just ready to go. But at this stage, this revised version addresses the virtual learning and it addresses part of the hybrid, but it's the whole hybrid plan. It's not the one that can under revise. So it's, like I said, it's more of a crosswalk, an intermediary plan at this stage. Those are my, those are my comments.
I have a question and a comment.
Go ahead.
Letter I, exhibit I, it talks about lunches. I'm a little clear on.
Wait, letter I?
To you.
Oh, re, and then reopening, okay.
If you look at exhibit I, it talks about lunches. So could you explain to me? Because I'm not clear on it. The USDA said that any family can get free lunch, or I'm really unclear on it. So thank you.
It's not the plan right now, Mr. Darnold, and there's a reason for that. And so we were provided with that information after that part of, and the plan was shared on August 24, right? We were provided with information from the Department of Agriculture just within the catch, I would say, to eat. And so Vicki, this is this out, could you explain the process we've gone through with that when it comes to the free lunches?
So, yeah, so every year we have to reapply to before the national school program. We applied for that here, and then in March, they said that we could become senior summer options, and we're going to apply for that. That allowed us to offer the free lunches as well. So they opened it up at the end of the summer, and it was due by August 31st, and we had to apply to participate in the national school program, which we did. Well, after that was closed by everyone, then they came out and said that everyone can offer free lunches, everyone, but you had to be part of the SSO. But that wasn't an option for us to a blackboard when we were doing the chat.
Wait, you said we had to be part of the SSO?
SSO, senior, senior summer option.
So, so other districts that you get free lunches and go like?
So they could already be senior summer option. They could have a, a break leave guarantee with the teachers company. They were just doing it on line B at a, so what happened was, the applications were closed from September 3 to September 10. They were reopening that on the 10th, for us to go in, so that would be tomorrow. So they were going to go back in and then, and apply for the senior summer option. And if not, everyone would be free. So I found out today, or Monday, or Tuesday.
It was this week. And so we don't have the application in at this stage, once it's finalized, right? We, that's where the message goes down. I don't want to send a preliminary message when we don't have that step completed.
So when you anticipate that the children in the district would get one, it's supposed to be opening tomorrow. Then I would apply. It said it was there between the 4th and the 10th. So once it opens on the 10th, I'm hoping it's open on the 10th, then I'd be going to apply for that option.
That would impact next week's lunch. That's the goal. But if we jump the gun on that and say, well, we're going to just do it now without following the process that we're required to do, the district could end up paying out of pocket money that we don't want to pay. And, you know, it's, for us, it's a much greater concern. And even if it's one week, we, we want to make sure that we follow the process and saving the district's funds. So one week, you know, we, we decide to be more conservative and say less waiting, so we have that full process.
Okay. And then my comment is on letters B and C. This is a monthly report submitted by Mr. Conti and Chief Noble. He participated at a town hall with community members. I just want to make the point that those town halls weren't true town halls. There were no links for the public to participate. It was strictly for parents and staff. And again, I have the point, this district must be better to encourage participation from the residents. That's my comment.
Okay, is that all?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Before this is approved, I do want to thank Mr. Conti and Ms. Noble for their involvement in this town hall meeting. I want to thank the parents who were involved and the staff who were involved. And Ms. Darlow is correct. I did not invite anyone else in the community that was not involved that way as a parent or a staff member. And that, that was done because what we were discussing directly impacted parents and staff members. It doesn't mean that I'm closing my mind to that possibility in any way. I'm open to that. But it was just, the discussion was focused on parents and staff. We held six town hall meetings, which I believe were very successful. So my opinion of that is, although we did not include community members that weren't staff or parents, those who were included, I believe they go eventually.
All right, great, Joe. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to, I'm going to brief my vote up. So to B and C, I vote no, because the comments I just made. On letter I, I don't know, because I have, I feel I need to investigate that issue with the lunches further. So I will vote no for letter I. And everything else I will vote yes.
Thank you. Motion, Harris.
B and C?
B and C, no. Letter I, no. Everything else is yes.
All right, great. Thank you very much, all. Motion, Harris. May I do some, Mr. Mercer? Instruction for the committee report. This is Whitney.
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion to approve the following, A, classification replacement for confidential, and B, the IP committee meeting will be scheduled for September 25.
Make the motion. We need a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by camera. Questions or comments? Vera, I believe you're on that committee, aren't you?
No, I, I was initially, then I was moved to the policy, never was in the meeting ever, so.
I believe there is going to be a meeting, I'm happy you're going to be on, just also keep all, keep all, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote I for letter B.
I'm, I'm sorry, Vera. You're up, please.
I'm going to be opposed to letter A for the reason that the board has no real oversight over special spending, because of confidentiality, because we can, the board do not talk in private about this spending. I have no oversight, so I do no for A. For letter B, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion, Harris. Unfortunately, on a lot of the classifications and placements, we don't have a say, and we don't have any choice on it. We are required to pay for that for the students.
So don't ask me to vote.
You can vote your way you wish, that is your prerogative. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mrs. Whitney. Finance and Committee Report. This is Nethers.
Yes, I made a motion for items A through I, as listed on the agenda, with notations of, the charter schools and special education tuition were listed for, with the exception of K. That was my kind of motion. I'm sorry, F. I was looking at the back, and I said K. I was looking at the name of it. I apologize. That was me, F.
All right. I have a second.
I have a second.
Mr. Karen, you have a second. Questions or comments, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A through C, opposed. D through I, aye.
Motion, Harris. Thank you. Operation in Facilities report. That's Mr. Calabai. He is absent tonight. Okay, maintenance activities. We had our walkthrough tonight, and Tim, who is our head of the maintenance here, you saw some of these floors. They were absolutely beautiful. They cut the floors, they polished the floors, they painted rooms. They've done an absolutely wonderful job. Talking about, that was in the facilities walkthrough, talking about some of the things, we were talking about air quality, Steve. There were special filters that they're going to be putting in the unit vents. I believe he's working on the programming to make sure that we have enough air circulation in all the rooms. That doesn't mean that the state isn't going to come around and say, oh, this isn't sufficient. We have to do something different. At present, and our cleaning staff, Tim switched around our cleaning staff. We have one woman down here now that really does an exceptional job of disinfecting everything, wiping everything down. She's really crazy on it, you know? She goes, does a wonderful job. And, you know, she'll probably come through, through here and wipe everything down when she's done. In the sanitizing department, I think they're doing an exceptional job of everything, cleaning it. I wish we did have more people to do it. I know, I believe, Joe, did you say some of the aides were actually helping out on that too?
No, not, not for that aspect of it. What we're saying was, in the classroom, when we eventually have students in the building, teachers and aides are absolutely welcome to clean off surfaces, but we will be providing them with some wipes and that type of thing. If, that's not the official cleaning that would happen with our team, but yes, they are certainly welcome to have the ability to do that. And Tim has provided them, will provide them with wipes. Because I, I was teaching myself, you know, and I, I wanted to be able to clean off my own surfaces sometimes. And in a situation like this, to have teachers and aides have that ability, it is something a little different. It's typically the godly west Indians, but I, I can't speak for all the teachers, but I, I think that it puts people's minds in a, they have material safety.
Thank you, Joe. And one of the things we were talking about, the habit filters, and it's Tim mentioned, just about every school has ordered these better filters, and a lot of them are on back order, but luckily we don't have the children in now, so they'll be coming in shortly and then take care of that also. They're trying their darndest. Like I say, who's to say that a month, a month down the road, that the.
I would say, all the time.
Hold on, please, Eric. Who's to say in a month down the road?
Say, we need just change.
Okay, go ahead, Eric. Sorry, I can't understand. Okay, Kara's question, are we using any CARES money? Vicki can answer that.
Ventilation does.
Right, depending on the ambient temperature, are we letting air from the outside or are we circulating in the room?
Is that any of your questions, man?
No, there is. Are, are we using any of the CARES money we have?
Yeah, we have $461 that we were using for sanitation supplies.
There's a lot of, you know, it's not one thing, it's probably at a time.
Yeah, I don't know if he's here. I hear a lot of feedback as well. I don't know what's going on. I mean, for the group of me, it is the bottom. Because we're, we're, I feel like we're hearing the kind of garbled, I'm, I'm not sure what's coming.
Kara, are you there?
Eric, are you there?
Yes.
We're using a couple hundred dollars for CARES money.
I was moving out of CARES money, because it's, it's not going to be doing CARES, and it was not worth it. They think that they should have.
I feel like we're hearing a kind of word.
Right. Did you understand, Mr. Mercer?
Yeah, yeah. It's pretty much like, you know, better, like, it's very disconnected.
It could be his connection.
All right. You look red.
Anyway, it could be his connection really good, because we have those connection issues.
So, so we do have a $300 in CARES ones that we're using for sanitation supplies, and also have a quite good feeling, so.
Hear that, Eric? Uh, Eric, there's nobody else on?
I think he did, he did. Getting a call with the lady, I think that's piled up, and then it's all lost.
He's saying, I mean, he was just, he would have called, he was already over there, so I guess, right, this is what we're asking. I don't know, it's even on the.
Well, there's, there's similar conversations. There's family people talking on the line. And Vicki?
Yes. Eric, try it again.
Yes.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's much better. It's family, it can be manipulated. We've got the food. I've been looking through elements of the floor, and it's got.
So it's better now, Eric?
Yes, yes.
All right, great, tremendous. Okay, yes, we did use CARES money. We did use CARES money.
My question is about the CARES money. How much did we get? How much did we spend?
We got $69,000. And a little bit over $69,000. Most of that went for the math program. There's a couple hundred dollars left, about $460 left that we used to purchase cleaning supplies. The other part of the CARES act was.
What was what? The majority spent on?
Yeah.
The majority was spent on the math program. And the reason we switched it around to the math program was because doing it that way, it didn't affect us with personnel or anything else.
But remember, there was a $152,000 lost to the state that went into the school program.
Well, all that is true, all that is true, but it's the beginning. The CARES money can be used, and it sounded like something that I heard, like, gee, this is awful. There's endless CARES money. And that, that will, you know, even when it was, it was done, it was, it's small. But for safety and security, some of the main stuff that we've done, that my understanding is that we've spent a six percent, whether or not we have it or not, that is using a base.
We, we've already spent the CARES money, Eric.
What's that?
We have already spent the CARES money. That was in our, we discussed that in our Zoom meeting last month. And we also talked about the fact that the state took money from us again. We discussed that last month also.
Well, I understand, but it's great to have the new math program that we use better if people agree, and we have to, and they're going to.
Well, then the math program, you know, was something that is not a five-minute, you know, something that we bought. It was something that we worked on for quite a while, you know, that I believe the teachers involved, I know Casey was involved, and it was something that wasn't done in five minutes. Well, the reason it was put into the CARES money was because of the fact we could still get it that way, and because of the fact that we lost the state money, that the state pulled out. If we had done, that was, that's where we just.
Okay, now we want that done, but now we're going to start to stop using the, using the whole law. There's, there's all testing, we asked for, it's going to be a reference to where we're.
Mr. President, with all due respect, why are we discussing this year instead of back on financial instruction program?
That, that is a good point, Mr. James. Thank you.
Um, Eric, I'm sorry, we really can't understand. And we're going to have to move on.
We're still doing our office, Joe.
Okay. That, that would run according operations in facilities. Policy Committee Report, Mr. Littler. Um, Harry, I'll give it for you. We have a Policy Committee meeting, which is going to be scheduled in September 2020. I think Joe, we've got two dates for that?
Two dates, September 15 and September 28. They were, the dates weren't ready when we prepared the agenda. But we need those two dates to go over a significant amount of policy updates, two policy updates from Strass Esme, our policy management company, as well as some policy updates that are needed related to COVID-19. So for example, the live streaming of the meeting, we, again, we've never done it before. These are the types of things that are being addressed, the new policies that are being. Uh, we, again, we've never done it before. These are the types of things that are being addressed and new policies that are being developed over the recent months. So, uh, we will have those policies for October for, for our first meeting, by the way.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Joe.
Just, just made a comment on how far we've come in the American policy.
Yes.
Right before we were discussing policy about board members being allowed to phone in while out of town. How far we've come since that meeting, I mean, it is incredible, but we are talking about being able to phone in. I mean, you know, now we're talking about video conferencing, you know, allowing people to late in. It's just amazing how fast in a short amount of time. But I just wanted to make that.
Thank goodness we got the new server.
Yeah, Eric, that was.
If we hadn't got that new server, our servers in town were used from Moorestown. Moorestown donated them to us. And they were on the last legs of Moorestown and they were just hanging on here. Luckily, we've got a new server. We saw that tonight when we did our building walkthrough, which, you know, definitely out. All right, moving on again. First, our committee report, Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I will make a motion to approve following, A, the updated subcutaneous exhibit M. B, a reduction in force for following positions, the tax care supervisor and tax care hourly positions, three positions in total. And C, the resignation of Randy Hines, a part-time instructional aide effective September three, twenty twenty. I'll make a motion.
Second. Second by Stephen. Questions or comments? Okay, this is a roll call, one please. Mr. Allen, why are you asking?
Stormy. Mr. Natteski.
Yeah.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I think we're all ready.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Big.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Board liaison, this is Natteski, your turn now.
Uh, I just wanted to confirm that Riverside did start on the hybrid schedule last week on the third. And the reports that I've gotten on board members so far at basis seven. Been going smoothly, um, you know, as with even with our remote, there's pickups. Um, but it seems to be going well so far. I'll get more information on that as our board meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. At eight twenty-seven, we held a special meeting to give the green light to get the sports program started. That is replacement only. They call it the same thing from the school, like, no, none of the school were happening. Um, so it would be shortened seasons for football across country, boys and girls soccer and good luck. Uh, tomorrow on the agenda is the approval for the sports coaches. Um, and that does not pass more than the sports program itself. Um, they, it kind of was seeing what was going on, um, all of the sports right now are in blackout period. So even after an approval, if an approval is given tomorrow, the sports cannot officially start until the board is approved.
All right, very good. Thank you, Rose. All right, New Jersey school board, Mr. Littler. I'm sorry, Harry, we can't really hear you, so we'll have to save this for next month's meeting, okay? Uh, township committee, I haven't been to a township meeting. I do have a question.
I'm leaving.
Mike, when is the next meeting? Will it be virtual or will be in person for township?
Next Monday, got back to that meeting. That's the next Monday and then the following Monday, or the Tuesday, September meeting. Uh, it looks like it's gonna be all done for the meeting on the fourteenth. There's about eighty percent chance we'll go to that format. Probably have to file a decision tomorrow after the meeting with the administrator and the president tomorrow. The fully interest of the college. We had a lot of this whole thing, but we were related to. It was, it was a hybrid and they're using our phones for audio and a lot of people were dropping off. And we've got these petitions between.
It was, it was difficult.
Yeah, and very frustrated, so. We don't try to even figure it with all verticals in their own ledgers. Two of our committee members seem to have a very connected issue with that action subject, so it seems. Not all individuals, that's one of them with the committee members. It seems it's worth a better, we're gonna do that, so.
Okay, I was in there yesterday for these sewer authority meetings. And even with the petitions in between, it was still very difficult to hear. And I understand your frustration, the things you're going through, awesome. Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. All right, old business, board self-evaluating, board self-evaluation. All right, new business. Uh, committee meeting scheduled for twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty twenty-one, Joe.
So, uh, Mr. Jenkins, I just wanted to mention this to board members as a possibility that for our committee meetings, policy curriculum selling. That we have a set schedule, not I just send out a survey and we figure out dates, but a set schedule, similar to our board meetings schedule. Where we say, okay, it's the second Wednesday of the month typically for the board meeting, we can say hypothetically, you know, policy will be the third today of the month. And curriculum will be, you can do that type of thing, where we have a set schedule. That way you as board members know far and dense, everyone knows who to count. And that way I'm not sending out surveys for every single meeting that we want to do. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are about that.
All right, everybody put your two cents in.
That's something I have to get behind. Uh, I think the committee chair will probably have a bigger say, you know, the committee chair. And then, yeah, you could hold the rest of the committee, you have the, in fact, you know, that well.
Uh, I'm just gonna take the news, just in case you have it, Marissa.
I'm in favor. I think that just compress consistency and then no one will really be wondering when you can.
Please.
I'm in favor. We have plenty of, you know, the telecon, we can bring this back. Obviously, there's going to be times where something comes up that needs to get addressed maybe before the next month.
Yeah.
But it'll make those times easier if everything else is scheduled.
Yes, true.
Great. Well, let's, let's start the plan.
All right, I appreciate it. And it's not gonna be monthly, we wouldn't do a monthly meeting for every single committee, so I want to know that. By the way, I believe we have, I think we have seven or eight committees. So we are certainly not going to do a committee meeting per month at a board. Because not every committee is going to have topics that might even be relevant at that stage. But what we can do is plan a calendar where it makes sense to, okay, we're gonna meet for policy every two months. Meet for personnel every three months, something for that factor. See if we can make that work.
Great, thank you, Joe. All right, distributions, I don't think there's anything to give out. Public comment on non-agenda items. This is my you, Marissa.
Okay, well, I, yes, I have a comment from. I have a comment from this Zoom chat. This is from Bellico resident named Catherine Lum. And she, this is just a quick comment. Uh, the website, meaning Bellico dot com, the website does not list the correct Board of Education members.
Figure it will definitely resolve.
Yeah, throw that up. It's from Catherine Lum. Have a, look, this is kind of a housekeeping question. I was looking around, this is from me, Steve McLaughlin, seven forty Frankokas Avenue. I was looking around at other school districts in this area. Seems like everyone else has posted the twenty, 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 twenty-one budget. Just wondering when that will be public for Bellico. It is on the website? I checked, I was on it today and I didn't, maybe it is the short version that's not public. Okay, I'll, I'll keep digging. Got it, okay. And then I have one more question, which is, this is just like, I'm looking at numbers from one place. And it's not quite adding up. My question is, are there enough laptops for the students who need them? First of all, sorry, I. According to the tech survey from the Bellico schools, thirty percent of families who responded expressed need for a device, one or more device for their household. Right? So I'm looking at the number, also we have about four hundred students, thirty percent of four hundred students is like about a hundred and twenty. Looks like the number of laptops distributed is about seventy, so I'm just wondering. Do you have enough laptops? Because it seems like there's a gap there.
Joe can answer that.
The answer is yes. And I'm just bringing up the data right now. So what we do is we keep track of everything, I'm hoping to get that. Do you service that, or the serial numbers? So at this stage, we actually received more than a hundred and twenty requests. We received closer to two hundred requests. And we were able to fill all those needs. Uh, also, for benefit of the public and benefit of the board, we have ordered more Chromebooks. Those were ordered. Uh, I think they were a book about two months ago, but Chromebooks are currently on back order for everyone who's son. So we have ordered more, but we have been able to fill the needs for everyone who's requesting Chromebook. Uh, we also, based on what the state said that, that we should do, this is their recommendation and part of their guidance. Is make sure you reserve Chromebooks for those who are categorized as economically disadvantaged. So I had Albert go through the list and make sure that we were going to reserve Chromebooks for that population. And so I feel like, you know, we've done very well in this area. But again, we don't have an infinite number of Chromebooks. So we have done well so far. I am very, I, I anticipate that we'll have to use Chromebooks within two months. But, uh, yeah, this is definitely a key issue for us as a district and every district out there is, do we have enough devices for students? Uh, so what we're gonna be doing in the hybrid plan is, is we are going to pilot something we've never done before. Which is rent your own device for walnut students. This is something that we haven't shared any information about yet. We haven't shared any forums, but it's something that Albert and I have been working with Moorestown on. Because Moorestown has implemented that for certain schools. So it's something we're looking at because that will actually help us when it comes to the number of devices for somebody to bring their own. But at the same time, uh, the goal eventually is for us to have a one-on-one Chromebook for every single student. Uh, we're not at that stage. We're not at that stage. You know, I, I would say that Vicki has done a fantastic job with the budget. Uh, we've got Mr. Noble who will do a fantastic job with the grants to make sure that we're getting funding for those Chromebooks, but unfortunately, we don't have it.
Can you, can you give us any clarity on what that timeline might look like? Because, you know, if, if these Chromebooks appear in January, then some students have lost a few months of instruction.
My estimate is November, but I would have to talk to Albert and Eric about that. I, that's my hope and my estimate. At the same time, though, because we have so many families with the ability to have, if not the ability, with the device at home already, that significantly helps us. Uh, but at this stage, we're able to fill the need. And I want us to be able to fill more needs in the coming months. But so, yeah, November right now is, I hope, but Vicki, do you have any other specifics on that? November is a hurdle, Steve. I've heard districts being pulled down already, so I'm hoping if not then, but that's, the goal is to get it by November. And every, every school district out there that have ordered Chromebooks is experiencing the same problem, because all of a sudden, everybody ordered them, because everybody needs them, so. Hopefully, we got ahead of the curve, we got done a little bit better, you know, are ordering a little bit earlier, which I'll say.
Not, not, not only do you have a lot of orders coming, you have lots. You still have a lot of supply chains that have not come back all the way before. Especially with the global, global, you know, politics, we're not. Well, the fact that we're really need to fill Chromebooks and technology, especially because where certain, where certain things are manufactured. So we are trying to get them as quickly as possible.
It sounds like now the money is not even there. However, so it sounds like we're waiting on the money for a few months, so we can't. Some, some.
Yeah, it's already been spent.
Some, some.
I, I. I just want to mention that having enough technology is a key aspect of what we're doing. And, um, yes, it is a big challenge when we already don't have one-on-one in place. Uh, but at the same time, uh, what, what I really do appreciate is when families are working with each other, they're helping each other, they're saying, well, I have four devices at home, I don't need to go pick up one. You know, they're having the presence of mind to assist in that way. And I do appreciate that, because that does lead to Chromebooks from the families that have the greatest need. So I appreciate that, Rick.
I, I just have one more question from the public. Yeah, sorry. This is from a Bellico resident named Kay Marie. It's a question from Facebook. As the Board of Education, address the extremely low scores issued by the state of New Jersey for Pearson. Uh, the aggregate scores issued over the summer. Uh, the score for Pearson is six point one three on a scale of one hundred. Score for Walnut is three point five, three point four five on a scale of one hundred. Um, far slower than the surrounding towns. So I'm sure you've seen this report. This is a question from Kay Marie. Have you addressed that?
I believe this is a report that we discussed about six months ago.
We, there is a report like this, Matt, really. At this stage, I'm not prepared to discuss this topic. I, I mean, I, I can't provide a response or a solution or anything in that way, correct me.
I get, uh, I, I will just make my comment on that, that conversation really has to happen. The administration, as a board member, as a, as a board and staff, but also as a community. Uh, I will say that that conversation is a, is a very big conversation that we as a board need to have administration, but also as a community. And that's all I'll say.
Exactly. I, I want to know, what is the procedure we have in place for contacting families where the students are not going online? They're not attending class, they're keeping attendance, and you see a student multiple days, not knocking into the classroom. What is the procedure in place to, to see what's going on? Is there a technical issue? There's no one at home? What is our procedure?
It's only day two.
It is only day two, but we're following, we're following a similar procedure to this break, so there is a daily attendance form that's used by every student. Or parent, because a parent will assist younger students, that's our goal. Um, but when it comes to that attendance, if we're seeing issue with that. We are having staff members reach out on a daily basis. Our nurses are part of our attendance process, along with our, our secretaries and our counselors. So that's absolutely part of the process for us to communicate, find out what's happening, what needs to be done to have the child alive. And last year, unfortunately, we even needed to involve the police to do home visits, home visits. Because we weren't receiving any communication from families at all. So that, I mean, that, that's the end of the spectrum that we don't want to reach. Where now we need to send the police to do a home visit and find out what's happening. But that is the step that we've needed to take at times. My hope that we don't get to that point this year, but we have multiple staff members daily working on how do we impress students not participating or not being in attendance. Now, as of this year, I'm happy to report that it's very few students right now that are having these issues where we don't know why they didn't sign on and we're contacting the families. But we, you know, we have to look at the trend over time, we have to look at patterns, uh, why is the campaign, is it technology, is it home support, what is it? So there's definitely a process for it that we've followed in the spring and we're continuing similar processes.
As a follow-up, how are you contacting non-English students?
We actually, what we've done, and most of the constantly is no more of problems as well, is. Let's say, for example, I get an email from a non-English student. I've typically done a translation of, I'll write a response in English and translate it into their native language as well. Uh, but when it comes to verbally speaking with someone, that is one of our biggest challenges. Uh, we don't have staff members who speak the seven or eight different languages that are out there in the community being spoken at home. But we do have staff members that are able to assist. Uh, we do have one staff member in particular this year who's one who assists us with Spanish-speaking families. Uh, we also have a higher population in Portuguese-speaking families. But right now, what we've looked into is services that can assist with that. And, uh, right now, we, we have not acquired those services. So to answer your question, we are doing the best we can using Google Translate, using written forms of communication, or having them come in, these are staff members. But again, I'm speaking in the past because we've only really occupied two days' worth of school here at this stage.
Could I make a recommendation?
Absolutely.
All day today, my favorite stat, helping the non-English speaking families that I teach. Really about three app called Talking Points. It has all the languages I typed on. Do you know how to log on to Google Classroom? I send it out in English to maybe fifty-two students. Each student, I've already specified the language that their parents speak. So that message will go out in Chinese, Portuguese, Spanish, Haitian Creole in a second. Then I get the message back. They type the near. Then I get the message back, they type the near language, but I get it all back in English. I know where the problem is. I send out a spin castified video through that texting app. Doesn't cause the district anything in troubleshooting issues, it's just a recommendation.
You had actually recommended it in the spring, I shared it with the staff and I would share it again and we definitely will look into that more thoroughly, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Any more questions, I think, if you have a question?
Sorry, I forgot what I was going to add, send to Eric Moss of 837 Laurel Street. Couple of questions, just from what I had heard throughout the discussion here today's meeting. It was mentioned that we have digital divide money where you are purchasing phone books. We had 200 students filled all the needs, which Mr. Versenjer did say. What, how much are we getting in the digital divide? And is there anything besides phone books you plan on purchasing with that money?
Okay, we need to answer that a little bit, of course.
Yeah, we were getting just close to $53,000 in digital divide money. We were going to put this in front of books and hotspots.
Is there anything that the board can share to their water? I know Mr. Jenkins did explain stuff about air filtration filters. But is there anything that the board can share about their water in relation to the state requirements for reopening? For example, I know one of the handcuffs that we have at Walnut Street, for example, is that we have home police bathroom, girls bathroom. Is there a plan or has the state come out with anything to lead us in the direction of when we try to reopen after this first marking period? Are they going to kind of mess with those requirements or what's our plans of work with that? Is that something you can share?
Who knows what the state's going to do? I'll be quite sure, you know, it's well, it's like we're five days away from opening and the state can turn around and say that they're going to change everything. As for bathrooms, you know, Joey, that's the sanitization.
There is sanitizing, there's cleaning, but as, as far as the usage of the bathroom, right? There's a question that was raised in an addendum that I sent to the Department of Education stating that their guidance says that shared items will be cleaned and sanitized after each use. And I know, you know, I don't want to get too graphic here, but a toilet is a shared item. The question is, are they cleaned and sanitized after each use? That's not built into our plan and we don't know whether that's feasible. So I've already reached out to the Department of Ed about that and said, what are other schools doing about that? Because that right there could be a transmission point of a virus. So does that mean we must now, you know, clean every toilet itself? So these are all questions that are being raised with the Department of Ed. I also have a meeting with our nurses in a couple of days. I have a meeting with the Burlington County Health Department next week with the, with other team members, right? That meeting with the Burlington County Health Department, we're going to use that. And it's really strictly for Delanco only and we were, we're very happy about that. We're going to utilize that meeting to ask some of these key questions and say, what do you at the county level say, based on the state level requirements or something like this? And that includes the air filtration, airflow, shared items, usage of bathrooms, isolation rooms, all sorts of things that we have significant questions about. Because as much as I know that our team will do their best, a school is not designed to be a hospital. It never was. So we're not designed to be a hospital and we're being told that here and there, you know, you're multitude of health requirements. That's part of the reason why we did delay the reopening of the hospital personally. But we knew we wanted to make sure that we follow those health requirements to the back of our heart. So right now, you know, we have this month and a half or so to make sure that we have all those glitches or that. But I do wonder whether the Department of Ed or the Department of Health is going to have a response to some of the questions. Something as simple as masks, that issue was still being discussed in late hours. You know, and so these are things where we, where we think we have it figured out. And then a couple of days before school starts, now suddenly we have new information. So, and so like Mr. Jenkins said, we're going to do the best we can with the guidance we have, with the resources at our disposal. And what I really appreciate is the Health Department offering to work with us as a team and say, we will help them get on track with the health related requirements. So I, I feel pleased to announce that, that that's what we're arranging for next week.
My last comment would be kind of thanking the teachers and administration. I know as a parent of a kid, you know, like my daughter is now a freshman in Riverside. My son is an anchor here at the school. You know, everything went extremely smooth. He was there, he was focused. He said how much better it was in the spring. How much more he enjoyed it than the, than what we experienced in the spring. In the spring, we were going through crisis learning, now we're going through sort of mobile learning. And this is a transition I know we're all trying to make and making the best way possible. I want to thank our staff and everybody for their efforts with that because I can tell you that, you know, my, my, my son enjoyed it much more and was focused much more than he was in the spring.
Very much, we appreciate that.
We have, we have a few staff members here, including, you know, two teachers, two administrators, myself, Vicky. I don't see any other staff members in attendance. But the point is that I am very proud of what this team has accomplished and it's massive. I appreciate your comments and our teachers are doing a fantastic job. Honestly, the most difficult sort of things that they've ever fixed. So we say, you know, that there are some glitches in the spring, we know that. I mean, that was a challenge for us. But I feel like now that we're here in the fall and we have this plan, I absolutely appreciate whatever teacher we're doing. I appreciate the two principals. So thank you back on.
Any other questions? All right, and I'll close this with a public comment. Stephen, Eric, you're both running for school board. You know, you will see, once, there's a lot of things that go on at school board. There's training that you have to go to. Your hands are tied and a tremendous amount of things that go on with the school board. Some of us have been up, you know, making decisions at night, you know, that are extremely difficult. You know, it's a very interesting balancing act. Finances are always major trouble every year. And we do see what's written in comments on Facebook and all that. We do not comment on that. It's board policy not to make any comments because it wouldn't be right to anyone in any way for us to comment. But the amount of time that's spent, some of our decisions are spent on some of our decisions. It takes a lot of time and it's, it can be a very trying job, but we're all in it for one important reason, to do as good as we can for the children of this camp. That's what everybody's good with and that's what we're doing, trying to do our damnedest for.
I just want to say, you know, I get to the baseball radio, at least for me, a lot of time, my totally means. But I want, you know, I want to thank you too very, you know, and we have a rep people running. You guys stepped up, you know, and didn't just, you know, you're not just making baseball comments, you're matter of actions, thank you.
All right, now we have to go into executive session to discuss the CSA evaluation. It is approximately 8:30 now. I figured it's probably going to take us at least 10 o'clock, maybe a little bit later. I need a motion to go into executive in a second.
Motion.
Okay, on the favor?
All right, so I'll also let the public know, when the board comes out, there is no approval of any item. It's simply approval to adjourn, not any additional item, not my evaluation. Just so maybe the public know, you know, if you're waiting for the board to approve my evaluation, that's not part of the process.
All we're going to be doing is all discussing without the superintendent or the business administrator here, discussing everything that other relations, comments put down. And when we're all done, then the vice president and myself will make a report which we will get to the superintendent. All right, do you wish to add a question or do you wish to?
If it takes place in this room, I would recommend that members of the public not be in the hallway because then they have access to the discussion. I would say that, you know, we, we definitely want the members of the public to, we were building entirely rather than waiting in the hallway. Unless the board wants to be.